And so we will start this meeting of the Regional Planning Commission.
Thumbs up, Charlie.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Because I know we have a quorum, right? Just, Amy told me we did. There is no consent agenda, so we can move right on to the deliberative agenda. And is there any, since we've got the call to order and the attendance, is there any changes to the agenda? I don't see any hands, and Amy hasn't said there's anything else going on. She saw hands, so that's good. So now we move to public comment period on items not on the agenda. And I do see one, and I recognize the face, Chuck Lacy. So Chuck, if you want to speak for items not on the agenda.
Sure. I'd like to speak to your work plan for the next year.
Oh, that will be later than Chuck, this is for.
I'll speak more generally then. Regarding your 5,000 unit housing goal. I'd like to see you address with more specificity the expectation of outlining towns. I'm thinking first of Jericho where I live, but probably other similar towns to Jericho. The Jericho Select Boards, and I'm talking about, you know, going decades past, has a longstanding practice of encouraging big houses on big lots and discouraging housing for low and moderate income people. In the majority of Jericho, you can build a 10,000 square foot house by permit, which is half as big as Patrick Jim. But on the same lot, it's illegal to build a 3,000 square foot house with three one-bedroom apartments. These zoning regulations are designed to limit the number of dwellings available to low and modern income people. The justifications cited by Jericho include town character. Jericho is an example of a national problem that I'm sure you're familiar with with respect to housing equity and fairness. The Jericho Select Board has said they did not sign on to the 5,000 dwelling goal and sees no particular obligation for Jericho in meeting that goal. Until you hear otherwise, I think you need to count Jericho out. I think if you were to bring specificity to the goals, but for outlining towns and meeting the regional goal of 5,000 housing dwelling units, I think we can have a better discussion in Jericho and other towns like Jericho about whether we intend to be participants or passive observers in solving the regional housing problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want everybody to know that tonight, I'm the Essex Junction alternate. And, you know, everybody's used to seeing me do the town outside the village for Essex. And Tracy's here to do the town outside the village, representing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I see a comment from Bard.
Yeah, I appreciate Chuck's comments, Bard from Richmond. So it's interesting, I'll just observe that it's, there's a two or three tiered question here, which is not just select boards, but then planning commissions. So at least in our town, the core, you know, the real work on the zoning happens at planning commission first and select board second. So it's probably even more complicated than a single elected body's opinion. It's, it's a planning commission where it started to end. For what it's worth, in a similar sized town, there is support at the moment, at least in both the select board and planning commission to deal with it, but substantive progress is slow, I would say that.
Thank you, Bard. All right, Chuck.
Well, I'd say in Jericho, the planning commission is not in the town charter. It's really the select board that's responsible. Their planning commission is staff to the select board in effect. And, you know, the planning commission, it works for the select board. So the zoning regulations, at least in Jericho, are the responsibility of the select board.
So when you've met one town, you've met one town.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. This is an ongoing issue, so I, you know, I don't need to, you know, discuss this at the regional planning, you know, take the regional planning time to discuss this week. We'll discuss it tomorrow night at the Jericho Select Board meeting. So we need to move on then to. Oh. The. I don't see.
I think it's item three, the public forum for potential FY23 UPW.
Okay, yeah, we need, I was looking at that and went, wait a minute, minutes usually next. Sorry. So this is the, we, do we need a motion to open the public forum? Or just is it a public discussion?
Yeah, this public discussion.
All right, is anybody here to discuss the FY23 UPW projects? And obviously Chuck, you've, you know, spoken on that as well. Is there anyone else from the public to talk about UPW projects? I don't see any other public comment there. So without any public input at the moment, we move on, which would have been the consent agenda, of which there was none. So we, sorry, Charlie.
Sorry, Catherine, yeah, we got a question in the chat. What is the UPWP? Apologies for that. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Arnold. It's our Unified Planning Work Program. So it's basically our annual work program for next fiscal year. And we're kind of taking some early comments on that now to see if there's any input before that committee starts going the next few weeks.
Because the applications are due on the Friday, is I understand.
That's correct.
Okay, moving on then, we have the minutes from the November 17th board meeting. And reading it, it feels like so long ago.
I'd move approval with corrections, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second? I see Garrett's hand. I have corrections, but if other people have, they can go first. Uh, don't see anybody. All right.
Something new and different.
Yeah.
Well, I usually say with Catherine's corrections, but, you know, I didn't just.
I thought, you know, I'd give other people a chance. But I do have corrections. On page four, on line 40, we have, on line 47, we have overall Chittenden County population grew 8% and from 156. That, I think we should completely eliminate that line. And then go to page five, which is, line number one, St. George had the highest percentage because that is also line 46 on page four. And then we're going to see overall Chittenden County population grew from 156 to 210 in 2010 to approximately 160K in 2020. And that's the repeat of the line, and it makes more sense in this paragraph than standing by itself at the other page. You understand? Because those were two repeats sentences that.
I can email you and we can delete one of the sentences.
Okay, yeah, because I, to my mind, the, it belongs, the Chittenden County population growth belongs on nine, lines nine and 10 on page five, as opposed to on page four and line 47. Thank you.
Okay, actually, I get it now. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, all those in favor of the minutes with corrections is noted, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you all. The motion passes. Is there any abstentions? Oops, Dever has a question. No, her hand is up. Are there any abstentions for November?
I abstained since I was not present. Brad Holden, under Hill.
Thank you. Alrighty. We're going to move into one of our discussion items, which is the Equity Assessment Report Review.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we sent two links or documents. I think we had the short version in the packet and then a longer, the full report was a separate link. If you had a chance to look at it, but I can share, if you want to look at the executive summary, just, I was going to walk through that with you, if that's okay. And so you may recall that last year, we, sorry, this, let me take a moment to make sure I can see you all here. Can you see the document now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm playing around with my screen here for a sec. So if, as you remember, we, or may remember, we contracted with Creative Discourse last year as an equity consultant. They've been working with, they formed an equity leadership team. You may remember some appointees from the board, Mike and Jackie and Elaine, Heidi from the Essex Village, and Justin Rabidou from, he's an alternate from South Burlington. Were on that committee. And we kind of concluded most of the public work at a November 6 Equity Summit. So, and then they've documented all of the work. There's a lot of engagement work that happened outside of that summit. So in the, in this document here, there's some background about the issue of racial hierarchy and systemic racism and unequal resource distribution. So wasn't going to spend a lot of time on that, but just so you get some flavor of where the consultant team is coming from. So they gave us three, I'm going to again, get down to the recommendations, just so you have a sense of where we are now. So the first category of recommendations was about centering justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion in our work. So this is a little bit more, this first set is all internal looking. We're going to follow this up in our budget. But the first item was hiring an organizational leader, so a staff person, kind of focused on this. And then as we go through here, you'll see why that's probably important. The second idea was to expand that equity leadership team to include some external folks and, and be more diverse. The third item was more ongoing education and training of board and staff. So we did a little bit of that with the board last year, more of it with the staff. Establish a process for conducting many equity audits ahead of key decisions or projects. So I think that's, you know, something, we've had a little bit of that in our, our public participation plan, where we kind of do some early evaluation to see if there's a need for extra engagement. Then this is step, taking that process a step further, which needs some work. And feel free to interrupt me if you have questions about what that might mean for us on any of these. And then kind of focusing a little bit more of our resources on, on engagement and relationship building at the front of all projects. And, you know, I think as we try to digest that, that may not be needed for all projects, but maybe projects in different geographic areas of our region. But I think it's a good point in general, more investment in our engagement work. The second category is more external facing about prioritizing connections with diverse populations. So an idea here about, can we make, you know, our formal, we have a lot of meetings between committees and board meetings. Can we make those more open to different people from different backgrounds in our community? So that's something to think about, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. And about how to go about doing that also is going to require some work. And, you know, which things we can do that and which things we can do part of it. And then this is participating in external group activities, which we again have done some of, always more to do there. Create opportunities for external, particularly BIPOC and people with marginalized identities to engage and intentionally inform our work. Again, we've, you know, done some spots of this, but I think how to systematize that and get that better is some opportunity for more work there. And then finding opportunities to uplift and celebrate BIPOC organizations. Again, something we've done some of and we can do more of. And then the third category is, I think, really following up from that Equity Summit that we did in, in November. You know, can we do more things like that and have learning opportunities for people working in the region on this? Convening leaders and just, and then also just the connection with the municipalities. So the equity leadership team, you know, gave some input into the draft of this back at the end of December. We kind of got this right around Christmas time, I think. And you'll see in the next, I don't know, any questions on this? But I was going to say, quick, long story short, I am recommending in the budget adjustment and the revised mid-year UPWP that we do budget to hire a staff person to specifically focus on this work in the coming months. But any quick questions, I wanted you all to be aware of this report, its recommendations and.
Hey, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
It's Mike. Thanks for that. Can you maybe expand a little bit on? Number one, and specifically, we had talked about the possibility of, of making a board position. And that was, I'm going to say discouraged, I don't know if that's the right term or not, by the equity team that we, the consultants we worked with. And the other thing too, is that we had a discussion, the executive committee meeting last week about the fact that this report, these recommendations focus on race as opposed to more globally economic issues and one as long, as well as race. Can you touch on that maybe a little bit?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mike, for, and I think, let me talk, the first idea first. Yeah, there was some good conversation, you know, about like, should we try to get, you know, just like we have a, you know, a transportation, oh no, that's not a good example. We have a business seat, you know, conservation, natural resource seat on our board and agriculture seat. You know, should we have an equity seat? So there was some discussion with the consultant team about that. And I think they had some concerns, this is my interpretation, not their words exactly. But they had some concerns about kind of not doing the work, but just kind of leaping to that point. And that it might feel kind of like tokenism and maybe not be an effective first step. But I think this, in this second category, the first recommendation here about our meetings and things. I think this is probably putting us on a path where maybe that is one of the outcomes. Maybe we have a board seat, maybe there's a seat on the tack that's focused on equity or, or some of our other committees. So I don't think we know exactly how this is going to evolve. But Mike, I do think that kind of remains as a possibility. It just wasn't one of the first steps that they thought we should take with regard to that. And then, and your second point about the focus on race is a good issue to talk about. And I think when we've had creative discourse at the board meeting previously, I think we've had a little bit of conversation in this regard. But it's, I think from, from their background and working on these issues and difficult and challenging issues, they've come to the conclusion of kind of a race-first approach to dealing with inequities and marginalized communities in, in our community. And so Sue Corbett gave me an analogy that was kind of helpful for me to think about. Because at Mike's point is good, like we are, we are talking here about how to really hear from people. And we've always had these Title VI requirements from federal requirements to engage marginalized communities and underrepresented communities. The question is how to do that more effectively? And those categories are not just race, their ethnicity, their abilities, their genders, you know, just income. Right? So there's a lot of, there's a lot covered by those categories of underrepresented or marginalized communities. But their feeling is that if we talk about race first, it will benefit everyone. And the example that they gave me was talking about the American with Disabilities Act. If, if some of you may remember back to, I think it was 1990, right? And all of a sudden, we had to do things like put in ramps at sidewalks for, you know, people that were in wheelchairs, right? Like that was not a requirement before the American with Disabilities Act. And their analogy was, yes, that was about people with disabilities. But it just, it didn't just benefit people with disabilities. It also benefited the rest of the community so that, you know, kids on a bike or a mom with a stroller, or dad with a stroller, or a guy making a delivery on a hand truck was also able to benefit from all those ramps and accessibility improvements that got made. And so their analogy was kind of like, this is a little bit like that. If we make it better for people of color to engage, that will also benefit all of the other marginalized communities in our community. So I don't know if that's helpful to you, it was helpful to me to think about that as an example. But, and it is, I think, Mike, this is going to be a recurring issue of, you know, how focused and narrow is this versus how broad? I'm sure we'll keep coming back to that as we think about how to operationalize some improvements.
Thanks, Charlie. That's all I was looking for.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mott.
I, I'm trying to think how to phrase this. I think most of the folks on the board know that I'm pretty darn liberal. That being said, I found number one really offensive. Not towards us. But to claim that using Robert's Rules of Orders is confusing and inaccessible to marginalized people. The implication there is, is well, they're not capable of understanding it. And I understand they were dealing with pendulum swings and various different points. But number one, far less than any of the others, really bugged me. And I felt a great deal of it was inappropriate on their behalf, not so much on ours. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Bard?
Thanks, Garrett. It's Bard, yeah. You know, I wrestled with this a little bit. I will say, I've seen, like, if you watch Congress using Robert's Rules of Order, you know, I've seen people get lost, like an amendment to the amendment to the amendment. No, that's out of order because you can't amend the amendment to the amendment, you have to go. So I've seen that happen, but honestly, in my experience in Vermont, I haven't really seen that happen. I've seen it used in a semi-structured or semi-formal way. So I sort of stumbled on this one a little bit, that, you know, perhaps a parliamentarian strict approach to Robert's Rules of Order would be off-putting and inaccessible. But generally, the semi-structured approach that I've seen has been actually probably helpful to give some structure. And, you know, without saying who it's confusing to or inaccessible to. Just an observation about the difference between the strict adherence and sort of the practical adherence that I've seen.
And for that matter, if you're going to play baseball, basketball, football, whatever, there are rules. And I'm not saying we necessarily have to have strict rules. However, there needs to be guidance for how things are discussed. Otherwise, it's a complete free for all. So anyway, the, for me, the biggest implication of that, I felt, was completely bigoted in what they had to say, which rather blew me away.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? On anything in the report at all?
Yeah, I do have one, if nobody else does.
I missed that, who says?
Yeah, that was John.
John.
First, we, I think we need to be a little sensitive to sometimes we get lost in cultural differences. You know, Robert's Rules, for instance, is something we're all used to as a culture. When you have people from a foreign land come to our land, they do things differently back home. And the culture sometimes can be confusing and off-putting. And that can actually make it discouraging for them to participate. You know, one of the easiest analogies I can use is just when it comes to medicine. You know, culturally, if you see a doctor that is, understands your culture, they can treat you better because they have an innate understanding of what you go through. Where someone from a different culture certainly can do medicine wonderfully. But if they don't understand what your real problem is, because they don't understand what you're trying to say, that can be an issue. And that's very much a problem in the medical industry when it comes to, to different cultures. So I do, I understand all the thoughts that were put on the table here. But I read it as in just needing to understand that cultural differences can, and how welcoming people feel. Butting up against those cultural differences can be a roadblock to participating, which then can be a roadblock to our understanding and doing the right thing by all of our constituencies out there. So we need to be a little careful that way. And it is sort of with that in mind that, Charlie, I wanted to bring up, I haven't had the discussions with the folks who wrote this, and it's their report, not ours. So I get that we don't need to be overly concerned about a lot of little details because this is not our report, it's their report to us. But in number two, I wanted to understand how these words were used. And the first one in number two, the greenish, they use the word experts. And in number two of the green, number two, they, they use the word authority. So I'll read the par, the parts of the paragraphs that I'm, I'm looking at. I was wondering how the, how I'm supposed to interpret the words of experts and authority. Where in number one, it's the middle of it, it says, make changes to these procedures and processes and even disrupting the typical meeting structures and locations is critical to shift away from dominant culture as the norm. And instead create new norms where community members, especially people of the global community and other modularized groups are regarded as the experts. So I, is that experts in their culture? And we're supposed to use them as a way to understand where they're coming from? Are they trying to say that their opinions should then be above everybody else's because they are the overall experts? I kind of think they're talking about the former, not the latter. And in a similar sense, in the second one, the second to last sentence says, they also serve to disrupt the centralization of dominant culture and creates a space where marginalized culture is uplifted as the authority. So again, are they talking about the authority as in trying to communicate what the real issues are so that we understand them better and can understand what our constituency, our constituents are getting to? Or are they trying to say that these marginalized groups should be the authority and we need to do what they say? So people are going to read this. People generally read an executive summary first and never read the actual report. So I'm trying to understand what is actually trying to be said there. The two examples they gave, I believe it's the former and not the latter, that they should be listened to as experts in their culture to tell us what it is that's important to them and why certain things don't work or do work. Or are they trying to tell us that, that we need to put these constituencies higher above the rest of our constituencies? Or are they trying to tell us that, that we need to put these constituencies higher above the rest of our constituencies and consider them the experts in authority? So I, I'm just trying to understand what it is that they're trying to tell us here, Charlie. Any insight into that?
My impression, and I don't know if Emma and Brian are on here too. They've been doing most of the staff work with Creative Discourse, so if they have deeper knowledge than I do on that, please pipe in. But my impression is that, that this is coming from the context of trying to address equity issues. And so, yeah, I think you're right, John, that it's the former. Like, you know, we should listen to the people in those communities about what's important to them. And they're the experts in what, how things affect them. And we shouldn't assume how it affects people that aren't engaged, right? So we need to increase our engagement there. So I think it's, that's my impression. I don't know. Or Jackie or Mike, I don't know if you have other impressions?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
I, I just wish as a wordsmith, it was, again, for people who are just gonna read this, haven't been engaged in the process, and haven't been at these meetings, when you read that, you can read it both ways. And that's sort of where hard feelings get put in. And, you know, maybe they don't say to your face, but they go away thinking something that they shouldn't be thinking because it's not what the, what is actually going on. And I just wish that they had wordsmithed those things a little, little better to really tell us what it is that they meant.
Yeah.
So just, just some constructive feedback. Again, it's their report, not ours, but that is something I just kind of wanted to bring up.
Thank you.
Garrett?
Thank you. I agree with what John said there. It was not well-written. Another piece to address, I think, is the comparison between a board position as a head large commissioner or a staff A staff position showed a misunderstanding of how the RPC works. It's not, you know, staff is in support of the commissioners and of the board members, not the other way around. And of course, we all listen very carefully to everything staff says, except maybe Charlie. But
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Catherine, if I can?
Oh, okay, Mike?
Sorry, I just want to pick up on Garrett's comments because we had quite a bit of conversation about that in the, I know in the Equity Leadership Team or, and/or the Executive Committee. And I think, I think where we ended up is the staff position is one that, you know, that person can be involved with staff and look at all the projects and, and give the input right there and make recommendations to the board. So that's a, that's a an important and probably more beneficial, I don't know if I'm saying that right. But it's got more input, if you will, to projects to look and see through the lens of equity. You know, the, the impacts that might be going on. I, I happen to agree with you, Garrett. I think a board position would be good. But like I said, the consultant team, as Charlie said, kind of downplayed it more as a, it would be seen as a token gesture. And what would, what would then happen, you know, going forward? Is that the only step you take? Charlie, I don't know if you want to pick up on that kind of rambling or not?
Not, not rambling. But no, I think, and I think part of what I was hearing from them was that we do need to do more staff work to prepare, you know, whether, whatever we're looking at, a policy, a plan, or project, and the engagement work to do work to address equity. So that if we did have a seat on our board devoted to that topic area, that there was work done that they could feel supported. I think they were worried about a board member just kind of by themselves without support from the staff would, you know, feel tokenized and not, not have enough support to make a difference in addressing this issue. Again, my impression, not, not their words.
That's on us to make it work, isn't it?
Yeah. And, and I think, I think we definitely feel that at a staff level that we, you know, there's more work to be done here that we are really not properly staffed to accomplish right now.
Well, thank you. I mean, this was a very good discussion. Is there any more before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Stay tuned.
Yeah, that's right. Saying that, we have
Hey, Barbara, I mean Catherine, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Charlie, the
Garrett gets funny all the time. We all love to say it.
Sorry, you know, I'm, what can I say? I'm getting old. I, I don't recall it on the agenda in front of me, but we have an open position on the Equity Leadership Team. We're gonna talk about that later. We're gonna do that under your report, Charlie.
Thank you for bringing that up. That probably would have been a good thing for me to remember when we talked about changes to the agenda. Apologies for not remembering that, Mike. Yeah, so I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want to address that topic. To be transparent, Justin Rabado has left employment with the City of South Burlington. So there is a vacant seat on that Equity Leadership Team that's available. I don't know if you want to talk about that now?
Because we're talking about equity, I, I think we can, it makes sense just to fill it, rather than, you know, break this discussion up and then put it in the exec, you know, Executive Director's Report. Makes sense to fill it in now.
So I guess that's a question to the board members. Is there anyone who might be interested in filling that seat now that you heard how much fun this could be?
I was gonna say, who wants to come join Jackie, Elaine, and myself?
You know, this is Barb. I have a follow-up question. And this is informed by three other groups. This is the fourth group that I've at least tenuously involved in dealing with diversity, equity, inclusion. And people are using these words in different practical ways. So I've started to call out the question when you say diversity, equity, inclusion. Who are we talking about? And here, it seems strongly correlated with racial equity. And in the other groups, just, and I'm not saying this is good or bad, it's just an observation. When I called that out in our local town, what do we mean? Does it include the other things like gender identity, religion, cultural identity? People said, oh, it's all that, and started talking about other things. And in another group I'm working with the state, its first emphasis is race, but is also interested in gender, disability, and other things. So it's just an interesting question, an observation that sort of, first the scope, and then within the scope, what is the relative priority? Differences that seem to appear to me. I don't know if that's a useful observation or not.
And I will say, just to be clear, that I think we're more in that third category where the consultant has recommended using race as a introduction to addressing equity issues across the full spectrum. And, and really, and to
Since nobody wants to speak up tonight.
I'll pass it on to Charlie and Catherine.
Yeah, and happy to have a deeper conversation if somebody, you know, wants to kind of talk about it before volunteering.
And I would think either Mike or Jackie would be the ones to talk to about that because they are on the, you know, board as well as the leadership team. Okay, next is the draft FY22 UPWP mid-year adjustment and budget discussion.
So hello again. You got in front of you the mid-year adjustment. For those of you who may not be familiar, just kind of review our cycle. In the spring, our UPWP and Finance Committee and Executive Committee all kind of work on our budget and work program. We adopt that in May of each spring for the following fiscal year, starting July 1. And of course, as we go through the year, or even at that time, there's typically some things that are tentative. You know, there may be some conversation that we're not sure how it will play out with the town or with the state agency. So there are grants that are pending. And so in the mid-year, and there's also projects that either, you know, get started or don't get started. In the mid-year, we come back and try to do what we call mid-year adjustment and try to right-size our budget and work program to be more accurately reflecting what we're working on in this fiscal year. Typically, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll pull up the budget just because that maybe kind of gives a broad overview.
I think that's a good idea.
And, and I always feel sorry for doing this to you all because I feel like I'm taking you into a spreadsheet. Too much, but can everybody see that now? Okay. So this is our budget, the front side of this, or the first part of it, kind of deals with our revenue sources. And most of these rows align with different grant agreements with either state agencies or municipalities. And, you know, you'll see some adjustments here. And it's really about us kind of right-sizing where our staff hours go. There's a lot of detail behind this. And so you'll see, you know, we kind of right-size the regional planning grant to reflect what we're actually getting. Lines, row six here is reflecting a new agreement that the legislature approved in the springtime, kind of after we put our budget together to help municipalities with pandemic recovery. I'm just gonna kind of try to highlight the, the large changes here. The MPO funding agreement is pretty much on level with where we were. You know, one and a half percent off. With the exception that there are some additional consultant projects. I think you all got an email from me a couple of weeks ago. I had a conversation with Chris Jolly at Federal Highway who just tried to reconcile where we were in terms of our federal funding for our MPO budget. And he identified the fact that there were several hundred thousand dollars available to be programmed if we could. So I did send out that request of like, hey, if you've got something for FY23, that resulted in a handful of also, how about this year, FY22 projects, which if they had local match, seemed to make sense. So and I don't know if I should review it here, but there's, I think, five projects. One is to deal with Amtrak coming to Burlington in June, that doing some extra work in Burlington just about wayfinding. And how do people get to and from the Amtrak station? Where do they park? How do they find a bike? How do they find a bus? Those kinds of things. One is a tentative project in Charlotte to help them get started on looking at their town highway garage. And Elaine, help me if, if I get stuck here. One is looking at the possibility, kind of a technical feasibility of some sort of transit intercept facility in the south end of Burlington where the Champlain Parkway is going to land. And I'm missing the fourth one.
It's the East Charlotte Village Traffic Calming.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And then the other one is the Winuski ADA Transition Plan.
Thank you. Yeah, and then Charlotte, and then Colchester.
Colchester, right.
And I apologize, I missed one project. So if you could, as you consider a motion on this, consider that with what's in the, with what's shown, plus this additional Colchester project to kind of refine their pollution control, sorry, their phosphorus control plan and kind of delve into some more detail in ten, ten sites, I think, around the town. So there's kind of with that edit. And, and if you could give me a little bit of space, there may be a couple little tweaks, you know, a little bit of dollars or hours here that we might need a little bit of adjustment. So, so that's the MPO work. And that's why the, sorry, just what I was really kind of focused on here was this $249,000 increase in consultant dollars. That's what that is. That, and according to Federal Highway, we have at least $500,000 available in this, in this right now. So this is not even depleting the resources available. And I think, as I noted in that email, we have probably a similar amount of new funding coming as a result of the infrastructure bill that Congress and the President passed over the last couple of months. So that's previewing. This Elderly and People with Disability Summit is a new task here with Vtrans funding to do in, I can't remember, sometime next summer, I think, June, July, June. And then there's a couple other new pots here that came out of the legislative action as ARPA money was flowing. One was some extra brownfields money. So we got about $100,000 of brownfields. And another one was helping municipalities focus on energy project implementation. And we hired Ann Janda to work on that work. So this was a significant amount for us to have, increase our staff to help municipalities focus on energy projects. And then other smaller ones, yeah, I think this, this COVID impact on racial, sorry, I'm looking at this 168,000 COVID impact on racial health disparities. This came up late last year with the Vermont Racial Justice Alliance got a grant from the Department of Health, and they needed a fiscal agent. So we're just acting as kind of a pass-through entity to work on those racial health disparities. And, and then there's a pending project here about healthy community design and equity, also from the Health Department. Any questions? Sorry, I feel like I'm down a bunch of rabbit holes. Hopefully, this is helpful. But on our whole revenue side, it's about, in terms of our operations, which is kind of the staffing support's $114,000 more. There's $500,000 more in the consultant, which is not just transportation, but some of these other things like, like the Racial Justice Alliance is part of that. So overall, our revenue side looks to be up around 12%. Any questions on this side? Or I move to the expense side?
Charlie, I have a question now. I've been pondering this between the Department of Health's work on health equity. They have a group that sort of works on that. There are folks working, the Agency of Human Services. Numerous health organizations have to do health, community health needs assessments, including home health agencies and hospitals. And I'm sort of wondering, it feels like this is a new and expanded role. But maybe I've missed something in the history of the CCRPC's role in the context of those other entities and how they approach community health and health equities and disparities.
I'm gonna say somewhat, I think we've, yeah, it started relationships with like the Medical Center and the Department of Health's, probably going back to the original Ecos Plan, going back 10 years ago. So some of this is, I guess, follow-up from the work that happened with our Ecos Plan work 10 years ago, Barb. But, but there is, what happened, I think what you're really seeing is more money flowing into the system to address these issues, and then them looking for more partners in how to do this work.
Yeah, it was really more on like the racial health disparities. And it seems like there's a tension and stuff flowing there. And so far, there is what I would describe as a paucity of, of data. And so it just, it's just an observation. I'm not saying it's good or bad. You know, there is this emerging emphasis on health disparities and inequities. And I'll observe And I'll observe that our department perhaps has its own bias, that health equities and disparities are not limited to race. They are also associated with disability and age, and there is substantial evidence in both of those. So it just, it's similar to the earlier conversation of, you know, are we talking health disparities and inequities? Are we talking racial health disparities and inequities? Just kind of an interesting question.
Yeah, and I'm sure we will come back to that in various topics, and definitely an increased focus from the federal administration is part of what we're also, I think, feeling here. Any other questions on the revenue side of the budget? Okay, so I'm going to try to scroll over here to the expense side. Sorry, I'm acting like you have this as a piece of paper, but this is, this used to be a big piece of paper. So on the backside was the expenses. So I'm really highlighting, and I made reference earlier to the, the equity staff position. And I highlighted these cells here to note that this budget does propose hiring an equity staff person for the last few months of the fiscal year, and also primarily because of the clean water service provider work, which we've kind of talked about a little bit over the last couple of years. That's going to kick off in earnest in FY23. And I'm also proposing to bring in a, somebody in our business office to help with that additional increment of administrative work that's going to be going on in that arena. They won't exclusively work on that, but there's just another chunk of work coming to our business office that really needs help. So there are, to be totally transparent, two new positions proposed in this budget amendment. To be clear on, and that's kind of the budgetary impact. So that, those, those increases are really have to do with the new positions, not raises or anything. And then the rest of the expenses, fortunately, just adjusted to really try to right-size and be more clear with what our expenses look like. The expenses, the internal operations go up about 4%. The overall consultant, 17%, so overall about 11%. We end up, and I'm going to get to the fun indirect rate conversation that I feel compelled to do each time. So we started this fiscal year with a projected budget of minus $37,000. With these changes, it looks a little bit more optimistic. We get it down to negative $22,000. And for those of you not familiar with our budget, this is not because we don't know how to, you know, take revenue and subtract expenses. It's really because of our indirect rate. So we do an indirect rate to apportion our indirect costs across all of our grant agreements. And for FY22, this rate, well, every year, it gets negotiated with V-Trans. And as our kind of, the, as part of their, well, responsibility to make sure we're following all the federal rules. And in FY22, we're in a little bit of a under-collection year. And if you, so we have this table down at the bottom here, kind of showing the history of our indirect rates, what, what we were approved for, which means what we bill, and then what it actually was. And you can see that each year, we either under or over-collect. And we appear to be caught in a little bit of a two-year cycle, or two years we under-collect, and then two years we over-collect. And we're, we've been trying to kind of reduce the swings. You can see like back in FY17, we had an $85,000 swing, or FY19, a $52,000 swing. So we've been trying over time, as your, each year goes on, to reduce these swings. But I just didn't want you to be concerned about a negative budget. It's actually planned for because we over-collected two years ago in our indirect rate costs. So we're now under-collecting to try to be fair to those funding agencies. Sorry, that was maybe a lot more detail than you wanted. And at the very bottom of this, we also give you a little bit of cash balance report. So at the end of December, we were $660,000 in our accounts. Any questions on the budget? Yeah, and let me know if you want to delve into the work program. That's a lot bigger spreadsheet. Jackie looks like a sane person.
That's like the one downside of being on that committee. How do you look at that spreadsheet?
I'll stop sharing this.
Any other questions or comments on the mid-year adjustment budget? All right, I don't see any hands. So we will move on to the initial climate action plan and comprehensive energy plan. Highlights and staff comments.
Sorry, Madam Chair, before I move on, can we get action on the budget?
Oh, that's right.
With the understanding that there's that additional Colchester project, and we may have some minor technical edits.
Actually, apologize for the loss of focus there. Garrett? Whoops.
Is this an MPO vote or RPC?
A full, full argument.
So do we have a motion to accept the, the mid-year adjustment and budget change, as changed?
I'll move. Garrett?
Okay, thank you, Andy. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand, either way.
Aye.
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 So the Global Warming Solutions Act was enacted in September 2020. Right after that, the Climate Council was formed, and they put together a climate action plan that was adopted on December 1st. They're calling it their initial plan, because there will be updates, and there's required updates every four years. Next slide. So the Global Warming Solutions Act has several requirements for emissions reductions, culminating in 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. And this graphic just shows you the different sectors and those targets. Next slide. So the Climate Action Plan is organized around these five areas. The biggest piece being the emissions reductions. And then there's two areas that focus on resilience and adaptation to climate change. There's a section on carbon sequestration and storage, and a section called cross-cutting pathways. So I wanted to be sure to include this slide, because there was a whole process in putting together just transition equity lens. And there's a lot to that, all of the actions were filtered through this. But the most important thing to think about is that the actions were prioritized so that the people who are most impacted by climate change are addressed first. Next slide. So along with greenhouse gas emissions reductions, the plan also put forth what they're calling a carbon budget. And to begin looking at carbon sequestration as part of the equation, this is a kind of a complicated table. I just wanted to put it out there so that you're aware of it. Of the different sectors for a carbon budget. The forest sector is extremely important for carbon sequestration. And the plan points out that there is a decrease in the, what they're calling the carbon sink in the forest sector, and that we should do further investigation to find out why. But that protecting our forests for their carbon sequestration is extremely important. Next slide, please. Okay, so I am going to go over the pathways and actions for emission reduction. First is the transportation sector. The, the most emissions come from the transportation sector. The first pathway is calls for electrification of, I guess, what they're calling light-duty vehicles, which we would call cars, I guess, cars, SUVs, trucks. And to electrify 170,000 of these light-duty vehicles by 2030. They proposed to do this through regulation, expanded incentives, continuing programs for lower-income folks to participate in electric vehicles, more EV charging, and more outreach in education. So in addition to that, they're looking to electrify medium and heavy-duty vehicles. Very similar through regulation and incentives, but also looking at idle reduction systems as well. Next slide. And then the third pathway is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. The big, the big action that is proposed is for V-Trans to create a transportation implementation plan that focuses on things like smart growth strategies, establishing specific targets for vehicle miles traveled, increasing public transit, and then if possible, free public transit, expanding Amtrak, and really ensuring that the Complete Streets program is working as well as it can. So the second big sector is buildings and thermal. That is where the second largest emissions come from are heating and cooling of buildings. And the big push in the plan is to weatherize 90,000 homes by 2030. There is a workforce development issue there that needs to be addressed. There also proposed energy and financial coaching, possibly on-bill financing, which would put the cost for weatherization onto the utility bill, and efficiency standards for rental properties, as well as zero-energy-ready building energy code by 2030. Next slide. So this is actually not from the plan, but from a memo that the Climate Council sent to the legislature, asking to use some ARPA dollars to assist with developing workforce for weatherization. As you can see, in order to meet the goal, there's a lot of people needed to do this work. Next slide. And so the second pathway has to do with reducing the carbon content of fuels. And the big proposal here is for a clean heat standard for fossil fuel heat wholesalers that includes natural gas. Essentially, what that means is that they would be asking these folks to either diversify from just fossil fuels to other renewable fuels, or to diversify into doing things like selling cold climate heat pumps, or purchasing credits in lieu of those things. Next slide. So the electricity sector. The big push is for either 100% carbon-free electricity or 100% renewable electricity by 2030. Secondly, enabling all Vermonters to choose electrification. This means everyone has to have 200 amp service in their homes. And focusing on utility load control programs. If everything electrifies, there needs to be some load management and grid optimization involved. And then next, the agriculture sector. There are quite a few recommendations here. They're all reasonable, excellent recommendations. I won't necessarily go through these, but they're all geared towards reducing emissions and enhancing the sinks of greenhouse gases. So the non-energy sector, there's three things there they focused on. The first one is reducing emissions of refrigerants. Second is reducing process emissions from semiconductor manufacturing, which actually produces really high greenhouse gases. And then reducing fugitive emissions from wastewater treatment facilities, which essentially means making sure that the flare systems and the anaerobic digestors are working properly. Okay, so now we're moving on to resilience, adaptation, carbon sequestration, and what they're calling cross-cutting pathways. So there were so many recommendations here. I only pulled out the ones that I thought were noteworthy for municipal purposes. So these are, these are the ones having to do with land use. There's a big push for low-impact development, smart growth, walking, biking, public transit. Also, a statewide conversation about land use, possibly putting together a committee to look at developing a statewide land use planning policy, possibly creating a statewide planning office, and making significant revisions to Act 250 to support compact settlement. And then the next grouping here has to do with supporting local energy and resilience projects. So putting some funding towards climate and energy planning, evaluating the enhanced energy plans that municipalities have to make sure they're doing as much as they can. Supporting electrification of municipal fleet vehicles, actually adding some resources to RPCs for weatherization, efficiency, natural resource planning, and requiring municipalities to collect fossil fuel usage data. And importantly, making sure all utilities provide similar rebates and incentives, which now, you know, different utilities have different incentives, so it's not the same across the state. And then lastly, forest health and conservation. Really, again, making sure that our forests are healthy, that there are programs for landowners to know how to manage land and climate adaptive ways, and enhancing support for municipalities to maintain forest blocks, possibly authorizing A and R to have statewide jurisdiction over river corridors and all kinds of development there. Okay, so that was a lot. What happens now is it goes to the legislature. They're going to be picking the areas that they want to support first, what their priorities are, looking at ARPA funds to fund some of these things. The Climate Council is going to be looking at how, what kind of data they want to look at and track, as well as ensuring diverse appointments on the council. So the Climate Council continues to meet. They have a calendar. Meetings are open to the public. And there's also a place to provide comments if you have ideas, suggestions. Okay, do we have time to go over? Okay, so the Comprehensive Energy Plan is different from the Climate Action Plan. This is something that happens, I believe, every six years. Next slide, please. It's through the Department of Public Service. It, some of the things that are, that the Comprehensive Energy Plan focuses on overlaps with the Climate Action Plan. And then there's some areas that are totally different, but they did sort of work in tandem so that they understood what each other was working on. So these are the targets for the Comprehensive Energy Plan. I only highlighted what's new in this plan as opposed to the 2016 plan. And what we noted with these new goals is that this Comprehensive Energy Plan shifts its focus more to, from short-term renewables to decarbonization. So that's going to change the focus a little bit. Next slide. So the areas that the Comprehensive So the areas that the Comprehensive Energy Plan focuses on is electricity, transportation, and thermal. Okay, so for transportation and land use, the overarching goal is to increase the number of electric vehicles in Vermont, to have 100% light duty vehicle sales in Vermont to be zero emissions by 2035, and also to prioritize transportation demand management. So the recommendations are similar to the CAP in accelerating EV sales, continuing programs for lower income folks to participate, also facilitating EV market share through supporting charging and managing the electric grid impacts from the increased, increased use of electricity through electric vehicles. And then the next pathway has to do with cleaner vehicles and fuels. So increasing vehicle fuel efficiency while we wait for, you know, everyone to have an electric car. It's important to really encourage fuel efficiency and low carbon fuels. And then also enhancing the integration of land use planning into transportation decision making frameworks. So it's really important to reduce vehicle miles traveled through support of compact and mixed use settlement. And then increasing transportation choices. The plan does mention, you know, kind of, we already invest heavily and transportation demand options and should continue to do so. Our, our feeling as staff is that more needs to be done. Slide, okay, so thermal and process energy has the following goals. And the big recommendations here are similar to the CAP, which is weatherization priority, net zero energy code by 2030. Again, a clean heat standard for heating fuel providers, this is exactly the same as what I mentioned in the CAP, and encouragement of cleaner fuels such as advanced wood heat. So lastly, and maybe most importantly, this, this slide explains why the focus on so much on decarbonization rather than increasing goals for renewable energy. We are having some hosting capacity issues. We actually have pretty high solar penetration. However, it's limited by our substation transformers. Typically, what's done in this situation is to upsize substation transformers, but that costs millions of dollars. There's other things that we can do, such as promoting battery storage and other ways to manage grid load. But one starting point that the Comprehensive Energy Plan suggests is that all utilities have maps, such as Green Mountain Powers map, where we can look at where, we can really see the bottlenecks and where we need to focus citing solar energy in, in a way that works with the grid most effectively. Okay, so that is my presentation.
Thank you. There's a lot of material to cover there. Are any questions or comments at this point?
So Anne, I'm trying to find this presentation or the suggested plan and it's not up yet or this is the first version of it. How, how, how will we find this?
Are you talking about the, the Comprehensive Energy Plan or the climate?
I went to the initial Vermont Climate Action Plan on the official Vermont government website there, climatechange.rmont.gov, the links that you had in the presentation there. And none of the links are operable.
Okay, I will put a link in the chat here.
Great. It may be the same site, but when I go deeper, there's nothing really materialized on there that's good, working yet.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments while Anne is working on this? Regina has also put the Comprehensive Energy Plan in the chat.
Thank you. That works great.
Comments, questions?
About how much this is going to cost to do anywhere?
Right. So there, there are some, if you look through some of the recommendations, there are some dollars that are estimated in there for some recommendations. Some recommendations just say, consider funding. There's a lot of consider funding throughout the document. So it's really a matter of the legislature, you know, looking at all of these things and prioritizing.
So this is, at the state level anyway, this is going to come with other uses and things like that. In other words, we're, we're sitting here right now with an unprecedented amount of money that's coming from federal deficit spending sources, which is raining down on our state. And that's going to run dry pretty soon. And so I'm just wondering when we start to talk about the very, very significant goals for EVs and the amount of infrastructure spending that's going to be needed to be able to support those, not to mention direct, you know, incentives. That's got to be a huge amount of money and it's going to be competing with other very worthwhile needs, areas such as childcare and workforce development and all that kind of stuff. So I just was wondering if, you know, those are very lofty goals, but how much money is it going to take for us to get there?
Good question. We do know there's 25 million coming from the federal government over the next five years for EV charging.
We, we don't make a very big contribution as a state to every one of those federal dollars, but somebody does.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, yeah, I have one. This is Bart again. I'm sorry. You know, picking up on this question of the investment of EV charging stations, I, I'll just observe, I've been wrestling with a long time about what it's going to take to upgrade the transmission system to support all the charging stations and electric vehicles, right? That, we've talked about this before, that there seemed at least some level of disconnect between what we want to have for electric vehicles and charging stations and the transmission line capacity to support them.
Yeah, that was certainly something that came out of the presentation on the VEC.
Yeah, yeah, if you remember, we had them here a few months ago, yeah, talking about that very issue. These are, there's a lot of issues for the legislature to wrestle with here for sure, and the administration. Stay tuned.
And money will run out after so many years. It's true.
Yeah, and I'll just add that. So we are embarking on the Ecos Plan update. So we will be looking internally to our energy plan and trying to get it up to speed with Comprehensive Energy Plan and just thinking, thinking through. And I, I imagine we probably won't get into too much detail about the grid challenges, but we'll definitely highlight that like we did to Velco and, and we did to the Comprehensive Energy Plan as well.
In the chat, there is a comment from the public, if, you know, we, if you wish to hear it. Because we very seldom get a public comment.
Yeah, yeah. So the comment is, is there a recommended split in funding between EV charging versus focusing of mode shift to public transit, which would have better equity benefits to zero car households concentrated in communities like when you see in the Old North End? I do know that increasing public transit and making public transit possibly free ongoing is, is a recommendation. I'm not quite sure about the, the funding.
Yeah, my, my guess is we're going to have to see how the legislature balances those. I, I don't know the answer to that yet. So yes, stay tuned, Mr. Arnold. Thank you. It's a good question.
Yeah, the funding of transit is, is a real issue because like when they've tried to GMT out to the rural communities with, when the gas prices dropped and COVID hit, I mean, the, the number of people using transit certainly dropped to where it's not economical for GMT, but certainly at the same time, that's something we need to consider going forward and, and not lose that momentum of having transit in other areas other than the, the inner cities. So any other comments or questions?
And certainly, you know, I'm going to observe as I think Matt, Michael did about the transit for GMT. I heartily agree that, you know, to maximize the use of public transportation, it should be free. The shuttle that runs from UVM downtown back up gets heavily utilized for that reason. You know, and people would be using the public transport a lot more. You know, and we're talking pennies. It's, it's unconscionable that we're trying to run it out of the fare box. You know, this is a public service in the same way that if you're going to change over your cars from gasoline power, which are just poisoning the planet, to electric, you want to encourage it and you want to accelerate it to the extent that if it was affordable, if the government and, and there were resources where you could swap one for one a new electric vehicle for an old clunker, a gas spewing clunker, then it should be done for the sake of right now because of the immediacy of, of the need, the urgency. But the cycle track issues and dealing with the walkability within dense dense development are things that are also needed. And rather than prioritizing the car centric communities that we've built, and we can do that. It's been difficult. South Burnetan has had a real arm wrestling match over a cycle track on Market Street. It never happened because, of course, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee wanted it, but the remainder of the city said, we can't do it. It's not friendly. And yet, if you built a cycle track separated, people will use their bicycles more. You will send your kids to the downtown. If you create a network of these sheltered bike lanes, you will find people will be using bikes more and more. And that begins to move the needle away from where we've been prioritizing 60 foot rights of way for cars and all that other stuff. We need to make some changes along those lines. We can't just go from a gasoline powered car society to an electric powered car society and say that we've saved ourselves and planted its healthier lifestyle with the cycle tracks. It's healthier with the public. Well, maybe not during a pandemic, but I think it's better for us all, for human life and for our enjoyment of saying that we encourage those alternative methods more and more rather than keep paying heed to 120 year old technology.
Thank you, Chris. Certainly agree with that. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any hands or any other comments. Since this was a, an interesting discussion, I'm sure we will be cycling back to a lot of these things as they become more specific in the, whether it's in the UPWP or some other or even Climate Action and Energy Plan, Implementation Plans. Next is a discussion on the Legislative Priorities Review and Legislative Debriefing.
So in your packet, I have a kind of a two page table. We've kind of committed to the board every six months to kind of review legislative policy priorities kind of at the beginning of the session, and then we'll do this again, probably July after the session ended and we see what the governor signed or not. I don't know. Let me know if you want me to share that, if that's easier or but I, I won't share it unless somebody asks. But these are pretty much the policy topics are pretty consistent with what you saw six months ago. Clean water, still tracking that. The transportation bill in general, you know, we track that a bit each year to see what's happening. You may have seen a number of legislators are supporting a bill to what I think they call the Transportation Innovation Act to kind of follow up on a lot of the conversation we just heard. I'm not sure how much traction that will get in House Transportation and so we'll, we'll be watching that. Transit financing is a little bit of a different topic. This is something that was in our work program in the last year. Marshall Distill on our staff worked with a consultant and GMT and V-Trans. We delivered that report to House Transportation last week and Senate Transportation the week before. So they were both interested in hearing about transit financing options. Again, following up on the conversation you were just having about either fair free transit and or reducing the burden on property taxes, your municipalities, municipal budgets to support transit service. One piece of information I will share out of those conversations with regard to the idea of continuing fair free service, which we've had since the pandemic started, is the disparity between the cost of doing that for the rural transit services in the rest of the state versus our urban transit service in Chittany County. To give you a sense of that issue, it's about $500,000 ish to make transit in the rest of the state fair free. So they get $500,000 something dollars historically from the fare box. In Chittany County, that number is 2.2 million. And so I have the impression that we'll see how this shakes out that they will probably likely continue fair free service in the rural transit system in the rest of the state. And I think it's a very open question as to whether they will find 2.2 million to support the GMT service in our core, in our GMT service area in the core of Chittany County. So just heads up on that issue, I guess, just because we heard a little bit more detail on that. Yes, sir.
Sorry, do you have any information on, on ridership and, you know, how many rides? We're talking rural, some kind of a, of analysis of cost per ride, if you will?
I did not.
It would be much, it's cheaper per ride in, in Chittany County than it is in other areas, but that may be my prejudice too.
Yeah, I, I don't remember seeing those numbers, Mike. All I saw was kind of the budget numbers. Yeah, if you're really interested, we could follow up with Ross at V-Trans and get him. He probably has a quick breakdown he might be able to share.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, I've seen Alani nodding, so I think between her and I will try to follow up with Ross and share those numbers after this meeting. The fourth topic area, the perennial favorite of Act 250 reform, hope springs eternal. And so we'll see. And again, you saw this notion of Act 250 reform mentioned in the Climate Action Plan. There's, there's some pieces, there's several bills proposed in that area. I do expect, it does seem like there's enough of a priority coming from both the administration and the legislature that I expect they'll move something forward. We'll kind of keep following it out to see what it is. Not clear yet what it is, although I expect that it's likely to be something that makes it easier for villages around the state to have housing development without being subject to Act 250. But again, we'll, we'll see if that actually comes to pass. Broadband is the fifth topic we have on here. And particularly interested in seeing if they can make some funds available to Chittany County municipalities that are not members of communication union. Communication Union Districts, CUDs. We'll keep tracking what's happening with any climate change implementation bills. There is a lot, as you just heard, there's a lot there for the legislature to chew on, and they will have, I'm sure, a lot of conversations about what to move forward with. See, there's another topic kind of related, happening in the Public Utilities Commission, a rule change about forest protection, which is kind of related to that sequestration topic Ann just mentioned. So monitoring that, following a little bit of what's happening with the cannabis policy, particularly around needs for municipal zoning. And there's also a more fiscal issue about whether municipalities will be able to share in some of that revenue, particularly if they are hosting a retail establishment. Project-specific TIF is, I think it's also coming up in Senate Economic Development right now. There may be equity-related bills, I know, I think we, you saw some mention maybe in Ann's presentation about kind of an environmental justice bill that seems to have some momentum, which a lot of other states have and we don't. Municipal self-governance is the 11th topic on this list. This is something that particularly VLCT is, and a number of our towns have also supported some level of this of, you know, do we need to go back to the legislature to ask for every charter change, every specific, if a bunch of other towns have already gotten that permission? So I talked to Ted Brady, I think they're gonna try to advance some things there. Open meeting law, hopefully you saw the legislature started to address what happens in town meeting. And I can't remember if that bill also might open the door for 100% virtual meetings going forward, or that may be under some further discussion.
I'd certainly like to see the, them if nothing else, to allow fully remote meetings from December through March, because that way, you know, you know, it serves a lot of, you know, it's, you know, does the greenhouse gases, vehicle miles traveled, daddy, that, but it's also a public safety issue, so that people don't have to have at least one person even in the town hall during those kind of, you know, weather events, so that people can stay home and, you know, protect the climate and stay warm at the same time.
My understanding is that's sort of on the sidelines for more discussion, and they were just comfortable moving forward, that what we're working with right now through January 15th, 2023, so we can see what's going on with COVID at that point.